PM. Eliana, you want to lead us in the pledge, please?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call. Absent is Susan. Absent is Eric. Absent is John. Seated for John is Tracy. And absent is Anthony. I want to thank everybody for attending the Parker Planning Commission meeting tonight. Before the meeting begins, there are two ways to make public comments on any item at this hearing. Comments can be made in person at the public hearing tonight, or you can join the Zoom webinar link posted on the town's website, www.parkeronline.org/planingcommission. Facebook Live participants are only able to view and listen to the meeting and are unable to submit public comment on agenda items. If you are on Facebook Live and wish to submit public comment on items, now would be a good time to leave Facebook Live and join the Planning Commission meeting on Zoom. For Zoom participants that wish to comment on any agenda item, use the Zoom Raise Your Hand feature when I open the hearing for public comment. We appreciate your attendance and participation in the Planning Commission. Are there any additions to or deletions from the agenda?
No, sir, there are not.
Okay. The minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes from April 22, 2021? Do we have a motion to approve?
I move that the Planning Commission approve the April 22, 2021 minutes.
Is that you, Eliana?
Yes.
Oh. It's been moved by Rich, seconded by Eliana, that we approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes of April 22, 2021. Please note your vote. I. Okay. Thank you. Next, we move on to item 8A, a bill for an ordinance to amend section 13.09.040 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning the registration of temporary signs. And we will open the public meeting at 7:04.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the Commission, as noted before you, is a proposal for an ordinance regarding temporary sign registration. In 2020, executive orders were issued to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. The town is proposing to codify amendments to the code to establish a formal transition from the executive orders. Town would like to support businesses during this transition. The current code does not require temporary signs to be registered between October 1st and November 15th of every year. The proposed ordinance would suspend the registration requirement for temporary signs additionally between June 1st and September 30th. The ordinance, if approved, will sunset on September 30th, 2021, and will not be in effect in future years. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend town council approve an ordinance to amend the Parker Municipal Code regarding suspending registration of temporary signs between June 1st and September 30th, 2021. As always, I'm available for any questions you may have.
All right, questions for Bryce?
No.
All the other requirements for temporary signs would still be in place?
That is accurate.
Okay.
Okay. As always, we make the, as it's a public meeting, we open it to public comment, so we will open the meeting to public comment. Bryce, any hands waving?
No, sir, there are not.
All right, then we will close the public comment. Need any further information from Bryce? All right, we will close the public meeting at 7:06. Planning Commission discussion?
Yep, I don't have any, I don't have a problem with the proposal.
All right, do we have a motion then?
I move the Commission recommend town council approve an ordinance to amend the Parker Municipal Code regarding the suspension registration of temporary signs between June 1st and September 30th, 2021.
Oh, second?
It's been moved by Eliana, seconded by Rich. Just let me get my copy here. That Planning Commission recommend town council approve an ordinance to amend the Parker Municipal Code regarding suspending registration of temporary signs between June 1st and September 30th, 2021.
Do you have a comment?
I. Okay. Thank you, Chris. All right, next item, 8B. It is a bill for an ordinance to amend sections 13.01.140, 13.07.060, 13.07.070, 13.07.080, 13.07.090, and 13.07.100 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning extension of time. And we will open the public hearing at 7:08. Bryce?
Thank you, Chair. Members of the Commission, in 2020, as mentioned before, executive orders were issued to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. The town is codifying amendments to the code to establish a formal transition from the executive orders to regular code compliance. The current code requires a grading permit or building permit within 12 months of approval of a land use item. And it also allows the planning director 90 days, an administrative extension of 90 days. The executive order that is in place today allows for four months automatic extension of any land use approval. So total of 16 months and an additional 90 days for the administrative approval. The proposed ordinance would allow the planning director to extend any approved land use application through December 31, 2021. After December 31, 2021, the approvals will revert back to the current code, which is 12 months with a 90-day extension. As always, I'm available for any questions you may have.
All right, questions for Bryce?
None, none for me.
Okay. Again, we appreciate the public's comment on any matter before us. If you have a comment on this particular matter, please use the wave-your-hand feature of the Zoom meeting. We will open the discussion to public comment. Anything, Bryce?
No, sir, there are not.
Okay, then we will close the public comment. Needing further information?
No.
All right, we will close the public meeting at 7:10. Planning Commission discussion?
I'm just really glad that we're transitioning back. This is a good sign. It seems like a very straightforward.
Yep, I have no problem with it.
Right, right. Okay, is there a motion?
I move the Planning Commission recommend town council approve an ordinance to amend the Parker Municipal Code regarding administrative extensions of land use approvals.
Second?
It's been moved by Kim, seconded by Rich. The Planning Commission recommend town council approve an ordinance to amend the Parker Municipal Code regarding administrative extensions of land use approvals. Please note your vote. I'm I. Okay. Thank you, Chris. All right, next, item 8C, a bill for an ordinance to amend section 13.03.030 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning planning department adjustments. And we will open that meeting at 7:11. Bryce?
Thank you, Chair. Members of the Commission, as mentioned before, in 2020, executive orders were issued to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. The town is in the process of codifying a transition back to normal code compliance. The town would like to support businesses during this transition. Any changes to a commercial site must receive town approval per the code. Changes less than 15% qualify for a shorter process, which is called a site plan adjustment. Normally, these would apply to designating certain parking spaces for pickup, delivery, painting new crosswalks, and other minor changes to site plans. The proposed ordinance would exclude certain temporary site plan changes, such as marking pickup and delivery, parking spaces, crosswalks, other changes to support pickup and drive-up services from the requirement for a site plan adjustment. The ordinance, if approved, would sunset on September 30, 2021, and would not be in effect in future years, meaning that these changes would be then subject to the site plan and site plan adjustment review processes. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend town council approve an ordinance regarding suspending certain planning department adjustment requirements through September 30, 2021 of this year. That concludes my presentation. As always, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Questions for Bryce?
No.
Okay.
Bryce, are we doing any kind of an outreach to businesses to let them know about this, that this is going to change at the end of September, so that if they're not, if they're, you know, busy trying to keep their businesses afloat, they're not paying attention to how we're changing the rules?
So the town will be doing some reach out, outreach regarding kind of all these that the orders will be wrapping up. I'm not privy to exactly what that outreach will be, but certainly that's important.
And if there's a business that hasn't gone through the process and still has all their temporary signage up for all their pickups and things like that after the 30, after the end of September, what would happen at that point? What would be the process?
So at that point, our community services group would stop by, provide them kind of education, hey, you need to, for example, there's a business that has some chairs out that says for pickup only. They'd stop by and say, hey, you need to, you need to fix this and give them some time to do it, a friendly, friendly reminder.
Okay, all right.
Okay. We will move on again to the public comment section. You wish to make a comment on this item? Do you have any hands, Bryce?
We do not.
All right, then we will close the public comment. Any further questions?
No.
All right, then we will close the public meeting at 7:15. Commissioner discussion?
I have no issues with the, with the changes in the proposal.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move the Planning Commission recommend town council approve an ordinance to amend the Parker Municipal Code regarding suspending certain planning department adjustment requirements through September 30, 2021.
Been moved by Rich, seconded by Eliana. The Planning Commission recommend town council approve an ordinance to amend the Parker Municipal Code regarding suspending certain planning department adjustment requirements through September 30, 2021. Please signify your vote, mine is I. Okay, thank you, Chris. Next item, item 8D, a bill for an ordinance to amend section 13.10.250 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning prairie dogs. We will open the public meeting at 7:16. John, good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Welcome back. It's really terrific to see you in the building. It's been a lonely year and a very difficult year. And I do, before I get going, I just want to, as the, as Bryce's colleague and Jeff's colleague and as the Community Development Director, I just want to thank you for all your hard work over the past year in making the remote meetings work and allowing the town to continue to conduct business. It wasn't easy, but you really made it work, and at the end, I thought, really, truly did make it look easy, so thank you.
Thank you.
So I am here, as indicated, on a, on a minor item, a proposed amendment to what we call the prairie dog management ordinance, arising out of comments over the past year since that ordinance was adopted on April 6, 2020, as well as just some practical issues that we at the staff level have come across in administering it. And when I say we at the staff level administering it, I really mean the gentleman to my right, to your left, Bryce Matthews, our planning manager. So we've, by way of background and summary, you'll recall that the issue or issues that gave rise to the prairie dog management ordinance were a concern in, amongst certain members of the public in the community, the town council, and I think some members of the Planning Commission, that the town's rapid and unabated growth and development has some impact on natural resources in the community. That includes natural features, land features like steep slopes, open land, vacant land, as well as wildlife. And so that's the kind of the genesis of this issue and the ordinance. You'll also recall that in response to that, town council directed staff in the Community Development Department to research the issue and come up with a potential response. We did so in the form of this, the prairie dog management ordinance, which we discussed with you last year and perhaps even in late 2019. And of course, we discussed with council. You see lots of discussion. Bryce, if you would toggle forward to the, to the next slide, please. So prior discussion, this is just some dates we captured, lots of discussion by staff with council. Those are mostly council discussion dates with some Planning Commission discussion interspersed. And on April 6, as I indicated, the council adopted the prairie dog management ordinance after the commission had considered the proposal and voted to recommend that town council adopt that ordinance. And the ordinance seeks to accomplish a couple things. It seeks to promote humane management of prairie dogs on properties that are subject to development proposals and where they exist and the ordinance applies. It promotes relocation, but does not require relocation if feasible. You can tell I'm a little rusty in my presentation. It requires humane extermination methods if relocation isn't feasible, and it seeks to protect other species from secondary impacts from the means and methods used to humanely exterminate prairie dogs, if that is the ultimate, ultimate outcome. So it's kind of a pioneering ordinance and piece of municipal legislation in Douglas County and in the, in the South Metro region, certainly in the county. There are other communities in the South Metro that have it. And it has, it has started to, I think, at least raise awareness of this issue in the community, the public and with the development community. I think it still remains very much a work in progress. That's my editorial comment. And as to the encouragement and promotion of relocation, what we have learned, what we suspected when we were last in front of you on this issue, and what we have learned in administering the ordinance is the real kind of bottleneck or impediment to actually implementing relocation is the lack or absence of receiving properties and sites. We've learned that most public and private property owners don't want to open their land for relocation. There are some public landowners that do that, but they're, they're fairly limited. Nonetheless, we can, continue to work with the prairie dog advocacy community, with whom we're in pretty regular contact, and we continue to work with the development community, including those who we see frequently or have a big plan development that are here for the long haul, as well as other developers that have maybe a project or two here or there, to educate them, inform them, let them know what the requirements are. But like every ordinance, we planted our flag in the ground on April 6, and we've learned some things, and we're back here after having discussed some minor amendments, two minor amendments with council, to seek your consideration of an ordinance amendment. And that would accomplish two things summarized on the screen, and it's in your, your staff report. The first amendment or revision would, would basically incorporate a provision that would provide or allow a 180-day administrative extension of approval where an applicant who's subject to the ordinance actually wishes to undertake relocation and finds a receiving site for relocation of prairie dogs. We've learned, we knew, and we've certainly had that knowledge reinforced, that relocation can be unpredictable and take some time. So we're proposing this 180-day or maximum six-month administrative extension of approval for those applicants really looking into the future who may have an opportunity to relocate and who wish to do that, so that they have some certainty that their approval is protected and they're not, let's say, inadvertently punished by taking the relocation route and being at risk of having their approval lapse or expire. So providing that uncertainty, and I think we hope, fingers crossed, a small incentive for some applicants to at least give relocation a real try. The second revision would be that it incorporates a provision that humane extermination, if that ends up being the outcome of the evaluation and an applicant's compliance with the ordinance, cannot occur, must, must not occur not less than 30 days after town approval of a development application. So I refer to this as a due diligence period, and in that way, there's not a rush to the, by the applicant, let's say, the day after hypothetically their approval by the town of a project, to get the graders out on the site and just go. So it's a, it's a limited due diligence period that I think will have the effect of kind of cooling that off. And we've learned that most applicants and developers want to know what the town requires of them and what the expectations of the town are, including the prairie dog management ordinance. So we've learned that most of our kind of sophisticated savvy applicants and developers, they want to know and do know upfront what they need to comply with, including this ordinance. And during the course of the processing of an application, they will do the evaluation required by the ordinance as to relocation and all, and any alternative means of, of prairie dog management. But some applicants are perhaps less savvy or knowledgeable, or perhaps wait to the end of the process to see if they do obtain town approval. So we want to provide that due diligence or cooling-off period so that staff can work with applicants, make sure they're fully in compliance with the ordinance, and that they've provided, provided the required certification of compliance, which concludes the evaluation period and enables an applicant who has an approval to proceed with land disturbance, including but not limited to grading activities. And I have to credit the Commission for this. You'll recall when we discussed this ordinance early in 2020, there was some discussion, I think Commissioner Rodell actually raised this issue. Well, we have this requirement for evaluation of relocation feasibility, and if not, humane extermination. What are the expectations around when that can happen and how long it has to take? And the current ordinance is silent on that, so this is a limited revision to try and strike a balance and put some timeframe over when, when an applicant may go to grading and land disturbance activities. So kind of partly in response to that discussion we had at the Commission well over a year ago, and I thought a very good point raised by Commissioner Rodell, which we actually carried, conveyed to the council. They thought it was an issue worth evaluate, and we talked to them about it last summer in early August, 2020. Things turn slowly sometimes, here we are. So we're making, proposing those two minor revisions. We think it will help to fine-tune the ordinance, and we ask for your consideration of it, and I'm happy, happy to take your comments and questions. And Bryce, if you would just go to the last slide, and we are at the staff level recommending approval. I won't read the recommendation to you, you have it, but we do recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Questions or comments for John?
I have a couple. Bryce, can you go back to that last slide, please, so I don't? Bryce, can you go back to that last slide, please, so I don't? So with the hundred, so I'll just say the six month or the 100-day, 180-day administrative extension, when does an applicant apply for that? Do they apply for that kind of within the 30 days of grading, getting graders out there? Or do they, can they apply for that anytime during their, while they have the approval?
Anytime.
Okay.
Anytime prior to grading and land disturbance activities.
Okay.
And we expect that, in the hypothetical, if there, if an applicant does have a relocation opportunity, it's somewhat likely that they'll know that before they obtain town approval during the course of the processing of their application. They could also advise staff that they want to go down that road and seek and request an extension at approval or let us know. And we would grant in support of that.
And, you know, I'm all for helping developers or businesses, whatever that may be, kind of move through the process. However, is there something in place that kind of negates people just using that to get a free six-month extension on their permits?
So it would only be in support of a demonstrated relocation opportunity.
Okay. And then my second question is, so the humane extermination basically is 30 days after permit approval up to time of expiration? That they have to do the humane extermination?
So the applicants who are subject to the prairie dog management ordinance
Correct.
cannot, under this revision, if approved by council, commence humane extermination until the 31st day after town approval of their application?
Right.
That would be the earliest point.
Up to permit expiration?
Correct, that's correct.
That's all I have.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. We will open the discussion to public comment. We have any public comment, Bryce?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, we will close the public comment. We need any further information? From John? All right, we will close the public meeting at 7:29. Commissioner discussion?
Is there a pendulum?
I'm happy to see you.
That's okay, I'm in favor of moving this forward.
Very happy to see you guys take this into consideration. And I appreciate the fact that you're taking the Planning Commissioners' thoughts and feedback into consideration as you're making these amendments. So thank you.
Yeah, I think it's a good plan on the town's part to improve the process and make it better.
I'm particularly happy with the cooling-off period that you provided. And then providing the extension so that if we can move them, we can move them. That'd be great, so I support this.
I think, I think you've come to a pretty reasonable option for both sides. So folks who are ready to get those dozers in there don't have to wait too long. But on the other hand, there is an extension for people who are trying to move the prairie dogs out. So thank you.
I would concur and think this is the right step forward for the town. Do we have a motion?
I move the Planning Commission recommend town council approve an ordinance to amend the Parker Municipal Code requiring prairie dog management to provide a 180-day extension of approval where an applicant undertakes relocation and requires that humane extermination occur not less than 30 days after town approval of a development application.
I second.
It's been moved by Rich, seconded by, was it Ruth Ann? Seconded by Ruth Ann. That Planning Commission recommend town council approve an ordinance to amend the Parker Municipal Code regarding prairie dog management to provide a 180-day extension of approval where an applicant undertakes relocation and requires that humane exterminations occur not less than 30 days after the town approval of a developmental application. Cast your votes, please. Mine's yes. Okay, thanks, Chris. It's unanimous. Anything from you? Bryce?
Yes, Chair, Commissioners, one quick item. As the Commissioners are aware, we are in the process of updating and modernizing our land development ordinance. This is, because it's the entire ordinance, it's been a long process. We do intend to have a study session with the Commissioner in June, at one of your June meetings. So please expect an email from staff upholding to see whether June 10th or June 24th works best for the Commissioners. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Bryce. Anything? If there's nothing else, we will adjourn the meeting at 7:32. Thank you.